The regular business meeting of the city of Kansas Board of Supervisors. Please go on, we sign the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. Members present with myself, Chair Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Lovenheim, Supervisor Michael Albert, County Manager Julia Heiliger, Admin Coordinator Diana Salvi, Engineer John Tressler, Solicitor Ron Karasak. Terms of announcements, we have a standing executive session this evening from 5:30 to approximately five, sorry, yeah, 5:30 to approximately 5:50 p.m. Regarding litigation, the back nine MX matter and personnel. Save the date again for the trunk or treat, but I'll spare you. As I noted at the last meeting, the upcoming meetings for the month are on the back, on the bottom. But the Rivers Edge Bike Park meeting, we now have a date that will be December 11th at 6 p.m. here. We have no minutes this evening, so the first order of business is the approval of the bills, obligations. Total is $188,596.69, which includes two sets of dust.
A motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Albert.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lovenheim, any questions?
Yeah, all these initial, these people that I don't recognize their names, is this all the park?
Yes.
Security people?
Right.
Which is now over, correct?
Yes.
For the year, season? Correct. Is there's not thousands of people flooding there anymore?
Correct. Any else? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we will proceed to the solicitors' report. On.
I have yet to file the written report for the month of August, let alone. But my time has been taken up with litigation matters. This past month in September, we had the injunction hearing on September 6th with respect to the back nine. I've also been required to file per court order, a brief with respect to the Carol petition on the note took, along with another brief with respect to the land use appeal filed by Ms. Carroll with respect to the healthy minds matter. And I'm presently in the process of preparing the brief that is due next Monday with respect to the Mountain Manor land use appeal. Of course, there were also meetings I attended. I believe the planning commission meeting and one additional supervisor's meeting. So that's pretty much what I've been doing the last couple of weeks or so.
Great. Thank you. Ron, engineers' report.
Thank you, Jacob. This past Wednesday, we had our second master plan meeting for the bike park. We are working on three reviews right now. One is for the Wada Gap Wellness application for a recreation center. The other is for a garage for Joseph Whitmer. The third is a state plan review for sheets down at the intersection of 209 and 447. Wawa is working on their building at Gateway. We're going to be inspecting that. The Green Light Go project, and that finally received their modems, but they didn't get the antennas.
Oh.
We still, we still aren't moving very fast on that. And the other item we've been working on is the Green Mountain Drive Bridge. We did do a type, size and location plan, which we submitted to the project coordinator today. We will be meeting with PennDOT, their bridge unit tomorrow to discuss the parameters for the design and construction drawings. That's all that I have. Unless there's any questions.
That's great. Thank you. Then this report.
I have a question. Either one of the attorney or the engineer had any communications with Ted Hunter in the past two weeks?
I have not.
No?
No.
No?
I have spoken to Mr. Hunter with respect to the project and I have asked that he forward to me the reviews that were done by Mr. Tresbrand or his office so that I can complete the land development improvements agreement, and that's where that stands. I did get those quantity and cost estimate, but again, with other things that have been the other barking dogs here that are requiring immediate action, I just haven't had a chance to look at them yet. But that agreement should be ready to go.
The developers' agreement?
Yes.
And then you're putting it together or he puts it together?
No, I put it together.
You put it together?
Yes. He reviews it and has reviewed it and has made some adjustments and some other. Prepared by I. It's also prepared by our attorney here on my.
The cost of all that, if you refer them from front of the, I mean, the subacts.
Right, right. So we roll high on our.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got, I've got two more parts of my report, 3311, the more pages, rather after the number. Receiving, hopefully spending the next three channels on any longer than a month. Awesome. Uh, Rob, Rob, we've been patient with each other everyone, so I just got to that of the current which we resubmit is now down to a medical structure. Uh, so I started on my, 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 the period here, uh, which should be covered by a brick, brick, or a wall, for having six, six, eleven. And the road, the road, the town, and so, so, so everybody's aware, um, progress, six, eleven, eleven. We are starting for various projects, continuing to refer to writing on, 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 on. Uh, that's the accusation, and the inspection for roadway, and for, 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 my lab, over eighty percent, that's that fleet, and it's like, that's about five miles a day, one month. Work, work, Chris, I still know, the, the, the grant action has done, it's done. Accusation, we, we already do this super cover when he's six, six, we're first, the first two little models of skull that they may be.
Good. River there coming, grand opening on, on the weekend. Robert, my, my, you have a note?
Um, yeah, uh, okay, I will never start. Um, I did enter the environment before five, five, six, seven meeting. I was sort of looking at that. Part of our reports. So with, with I, so I, I, I would not have. Just as, I don't have like ten minutes for, 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 just as another idea, you know, yeah, 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 said that. Cause one of my things was, no, no, looking for something, so that I, I'm saying that. Right, right, remember if there was anything specific that we wanted to get off today that, that's the thing back then? Um, I mean, I mean, there's, there's still so much conversation around, um. You know, whether they're off our, what, what's my answer, the town, town might want to protect. Um, necessarily as preparation for protection. It was how about new environmental quality. Keep all our standardized innovation of twenty months. I mean, that was a big thing.
Um, we have no business. Your business first time. Actually, it was a word by another. Any questions?
Yeah. So I read this. It's a, it's a, this problem has, it looks like ninety percent of this. But so what part, part is this? Cause here's a little, like, limit there to pass you or you're, I guess it's a dust.
More like the same problem we have.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, why are you?
And so you just go in this, 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 this expansion, which is two million dollars versus three, three? So right, right, I think they have like one million or something like that.
Yeah, they're switching to a better, a better, so they're, they're. Um, they, they did from November at Northland, but as, as the advice. And in order to enjoy your little runs in the future, they are, they are drilling all over and basically several reasons you want to come out of that.
Everyone really missed it. You know, you know.
Okay, alright, alright.
And, and I, I would like was just. We resolve section of the revolution. And entered to restrain it, so, so not, not. How, how should I, I don't know. All, you also support. Other than that, so four days broad degree.
Thank you.
Code town tax funds, you're saying. So that'd be. Then we, we buy for that. This is, is, is.
Hi, the laborer, R K R S, representing Dr. George, John Georgio. Uh, George Alamos is here, representing Georgeio. He has a purchase agreement on the property at the intersection of Buttermilk Falls. And Severn Bridges Road, there's the old pizzeria that was located here. Gapview Drive is over here, the property, there's actually two parcels, and the parcels go across Southern Bridges Road. And they include the parcel that has a piece of Buttermilk Falls on it. Uh, nothing is proposed over here on the Buttermilk Falls side, development is proposed on the other side. And we've submitted a sketch plan for discussion. It is a challenging site, the history of this site is it had a land development plan approval. Uh, or almost approval, uh, back in the two thousands. And it was for a twenty-six thousand square foot retail building. Uh, since that time, the ordinance has changed. And what's proposed in the sketch plan is to cut the, the building in half, area wise. Take the second floor off and just propose the first floor footprint. To make it about thirteen thousand square feet, so to cut the, the building area in half. That allows us to cut parking areas down in an effort to come in better compliance with the current ordinances for. Landscape setbacks, things like that. Uh, it has an NPDS permit for the stormwater that is approved, the permit was renewed, it's still good for about four years. Uh, it is a, uh, the condition of that renewal is that we not make any significant changes to. The stormwater management facilities or, uh, the drainage areas that go to them. So we have, uh, there's some grandfathering in that permit, so that's, uh, we met with the conservation district, our first sketch. Uh, we had proposed more of a change, uh, they came back and said that's too much, we'll have to look for a new permit. And basically a new permit under the current requirements, there's a small stream that runs down this end of the property that would have a one hundred and fifty foot setback. So that would really render the project not suitable for this type of a project. So we went back to them, made it more consistent with the previously, the currently approved NPDS permit. And this is a layout that we kind of reached an agreement that, uh, that's something they consider as a minor modification of the permit. And so we think we can accomplish that. There was a PennDOT permit for this driveway intersection that was, uh, just about issued, uh, when the project was going forward, there's actually some. Improvements made out here for drainage and coordination of light, uh, standards. We have gone to PennDOT with a scoping meeting and gotten some comments back, we still need to work out some issues with PennDOT. Uh, they had asked, you know, is it possible to straighten out the intersection here, this kind of comes in at an angle. When they made the improvements, they left the angle there, and now they're asking, can we straighten that out? And the answer is, we really can't, because if we had to straighten that out, it pushes us over in the stream, changes our stormwater, so that would be. Uh, just something we, we can accomplish, and we need to go back to PennDOT. And hopefully with the township support, I mean, I think PennDOT, it kind of indicated in that letter, we understand that may not be possible, but we need to get them to, uh. To accept that, because if they, if they have to shift the whole intersection over, it, it pushes us into the stream and changes, uh. The design too much. So we're here before the township, just to talk about the project. One of the benefits of this project is that from Gapview Drive. It would provide an access out to the trafficway, you know, the intersection at Gapview and Seven Bridges Road is a challenging intersection. Uh, to get out there and unsafe, uh, this would provide an access way through there. Initially, on the previously approved plan, this was to remain a private. Uh, driveway, uh, people would not be prohibited from coming through there. Uh, we did want to talk about the potential to make that a township road, as it really is functioning as a, as a bypass out to the intersection. That creates some challenges, you know, the developer will be willing to work with the township if that's a desire. Uh, it creates some setback challenges that we have to meet, uh, when making that a right of way. We need some flexibility on the width of the right of way, enough to keep the, uh, roadway, it's already like fifty-eight feet down here because of all of the. Uh, the lanes we need and the, and the median, and then it takes down, and this is standard township road access there. Uh, it is proposed with an onsite sewage disposal system at this time, and we'll see where we get to that location. Then these are the stormwater management basins that are approved in the NPDS permit. So that's a quick overview, we did submit a sketch, and we do, because of all these constraints. Expect that we would need relief from some township ordinances, and so this is just a general discussion to. Kind of outline what would be for your mind. There's some zoning relief that we have to go to the zoning hearing board for. Uh, basically, most of those are related to buffers from the right of way to the parking areas. Uh, because we have frontage on three sides now, uh, we have a lot of front yards and. Your ordinance has encouraged parking to be set back from the right of way, but in this case, it's challenging to accomplish that. Uh, we also may ask for some flexibility on the space, parking space width, at the, on this sketch plan, we have ten feet. But depending on what the more critical, uh, issues are, uh, a nine-foot space would be adequate parking and maybe give us some more flexibility to. Provide more compliance in, in another area. You understand that goes to zoning hearing board, but obviously the supervisors, uh, could have action if they were not in favor of that. Uh, some of the waiver requests are. Listed and, and John has given a review on these, again, these are general, some of them are grading requirements, uh, related to the stormwater ordinance. Some general landscape, it's, it is a very unique site, and that we have this whole side over here, which is actually the Buttermilk Falls. Uh, so although we may be looking for some landscape relief over here, we're proposing to leave this, uh, undeveloped and, you know, test some options about what we could do with that. I don't think it's worth going through these, but we do need relief, that's the point, uh, to accomplish, you know, especially this, uh. This interconnection of the roadway. Uh, stormwater management, because this was approved under the previous NPDS, there's some things that are inconsistent with your ordinance. Uh, just in terms of some of the, uh, calculation methods, but it is consistent with the NPDS permit. So there is a, I would say, a good stormwater management plan. Rate control, water quality, infiltration, uh, but maybe not exactly the way your current ordinance lays things out. So we wanted to come to the township and just discuss the project in general, get your input on. You know, if that's something the township would consider, uh, would like to partner in and maybe take that over as a township road. We, we know we need relief because of the unique situation we have here, uh, the location, the way the properties, uh, split and the jamming and string here. And so I, I'll leave it at that, and if you have questions or comments, we're glad to address it.
Actually, I've heard this presentation before at the planning. So, um, I'm very familiar with it, and I think, to me, it's a, uh. An example of if something gets something, we know that the intersection of Gapview Drive and two oh nine is one of the worst around. And very, very dangerous, this would not only eliminate it, but bring it to existing lights, because if you look at the intersection. Of Buttermilk, their two oh nine, what you see is that the lights are already up there and the don't walk sun, they've never been used. This would allow us to open that intersection.
Would that have any, um, effect on green light go? Would we be able to?
This, this intersection is already programmed in there.
Right, so it wouldn't, adding the other lights wouldn't affect that?
No, matter of fact, I think the only thing we're gonna do is add a light. Or is that probably?
Right, this light, right, right. But so I, I guess I'm saying it could be synced up with that, saying, cool.
I got a couple of questions. I, I guess I understand, this was presented to planning commission, I wasn't there, I haven't seen any comments yet, I know there was, I think there was concern about the stream. Um, it sounds like a lot of the waivers that are being, oh, no, no, I don't, some of the setbacks. And I, I have some concern over that, we want to make sure that we're protecting that stream. And I, but I also know that there's the MP, NPDS permits. NPDS permit, right, yeah, so this, the stream runs right about the property line or just over the property line. Uh, we're maintaining, I, you know, this is a fifty-foot. Uh, buffer right here, which comes, the only thing that's really in that is maybe the edge of the burn from the septic system and the stormwater management facility. In that, in that closest. I thought that was allowed already.
Okay, what's that?
Yeah, so. Yeah, stormwater in a.
Right.
Existing. Right, so, you know, we are providing a buffer there, we are, all the water is being collected and managed and, and then returned to the stream here.
I gotta, cause my, my next question is. Gapview Drive, which I've heard, I know is dangerous, I've heard people complain to me, I've had phone calls, people, what are you gonna do with Gap, Gapview Drive? There's like three accidents there in the last, whatever, couple of months. Um, obviously, it's an issue, so I got one question, are there any drives? But who owns this property right here, on the other side? Other is, there's a driveway right there.
There's a driveway here, there's a driveway here, there's a driveway there.
I mean, I, I could make a case for why we can just close off, you know, just pass that property and.
Cause people that have, have, have access, you can't, I, I would.
I'm not saying close it off, I'm saying, as they're proposing, you know, you look at the connection to Gapview as it already exists. It won't inhibit anyone if you close it.
So my thinking was simply, one way to give you a greater buffer. And not have to get all these waivers is if the whole project moved over twenty feet. Um, if you're building a brand new road and that just becomes a new road, but from your next, last picture, I see that that's probably impossible.
And that's a challenge, so, you know, part of the challenge we have is we're under a sales agreement, we have constraints from time.
Of course.
This is a, you know, it's a year approval process when you're working with DEP and, uh, you know, the township we've been, we've been working with and. That process isn't quite as long, um, we still need a, a minor revision of the NPDS permit, but, you know, we're talking hundreds of thousands. A lot of engineering costs and a lot of time, and I think this, you know, to. Deal with that, that way it would really be a complication that probably would delay the project significantly. So, you know, at this point, we're just proposing to tie in, and then, you know, whatever the, the township. We want to do one here, whether it's restrict access down here, uh, so you can't have free motion or, you know, maybe I. Ask, you know, direct people to come through here. Um, you know, that's input that, you know, we'd be willing to work with the township on and coordinate the PennDOT, but. Uh, I think to, you know, as you suggest, it's, it's just not that simple to vacate that.
Right, I, I didn't realize, I, I knew there was houses there, I just wasn't sure how far down the driveways came. It's a shame.
John, would it be possible if this ended up working out to make the bottom of Gapview right in, right out?
You could, you can make it right in, right out, you could make it one way. From, well, no, one way, one way, because the people have to, for the two driveways have to get out, but you could make it right in, right out.
The, the only problem with that, and I, I observed down there when we had our scoping meeting, this is that. Many people come out of Gapview, the upper part of Gapview, make a right, and then immediately want to make a left to get onto the other part of Gapview. The downside of Gapview, and it causes a, you know, first of all, it's dangerous, and it also tires of traffic, because they're in the middle of the road and the cars can't get them. Buy them, and either way, it's, it's like, it's not a good situation, it's a dangerous situation.
Yeah, I'd rather see the focus be on the, the new road there and then close off access unless there is some, you know, other way, but. Getting to that, you've had success with other applicants and getting multimodal funds, do you think that would be a possibility on? Real, or not really realigning, but constructing this.
This, they're, they're realignment basically of Gapview, uh, yeah, so we, you know, any help we can get from the township and, and, and that kind of funding. Uh, would be appreciated, because as I said, it's a, it's a lot of improvement for a relatively small project, so.
Yeah, to me, I think it makes a lot of sense, I mean, for the safety alone, yes, but also we want that property to be improved in some fashion, there's. Absolutely no benefit to having a dilapidated pizza place, you know?
The developer's talking about putting a restaurant there to, to.
So that's, yeah, that's an option, we're kind of restricted on sewage capacity at this time, but, you know, sewer comes down there too, that opens up.
Right, that was gonna be my, my next question. What is the, the water situation, is that gonna be?
A while, yes.
Yeah, so there's no utilities that are right there, they stop right before there.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say one thing, uh, again, this was presented to planning commission, which I attended. And it's not meant to be a left-handed comment or to jam Mr. Euler or anyone else, but this board will be looking at probably. Twenty to twenty-two waivers on this project. Keep that, keep that in mind.
I've seen it grant more, I mean, the other thing is. On, uh, zoning variances, I mean, it, it, the timing may either be just right or just. Not enough, but we've been talking about performing parking for some time, and I still think it's crazy that you have to get a variance to. Make parking, um, you know, less inhibited.
I think we, we talked about making it nine-foot parking for commercial.
Or even just making it wavable by the board in Salvo rather than. Having to do that, but I mean, most of these waivers seem relative to. Making sure it's connected appropriately with the NPDS plan, which, as we know, is not easy to. Secure.
Yeah, I'd say about half of these are all stormwater related, uh, primarily because we were recovering to be as a pool. And there's some, there's differences between what's currently required and what's required for that.
Am, am I right in saying that, in the current structure, which is tiny, as is?
Yeah.
You probably would be able to get PennDOT approval to use it as is, or. With much, even little changes, because of how dangerous that corner is, right? I mean, they're, PennDOT that said we got to do this, this.
I, I would, yeah, we went down this driveway out, going on Southern Bridge Road.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, for anyone thinking, why can't we leave, why can't someone just go over and take it in as it is? It's because it's too dangerous and you won't be able to get an occupancy permit, because PennDOT won't allow you to do that.
I, you know, PennDOT would either require a comment in here where we are, or have a, you know, like an access off Gapview, which I suspect the township would be concerned about. Because if that was really access it.
That would.
Do the increase in traffic at that location, so I, I think this is really the only. The only safe route is to put this intersection improvement in.
Yeah. I ask a funny question about the closure of Gapview at the existing entrance, is there a way to close that off and have it still? Look nice and not just be a giant fence? Right, but how do we make sure people don't go over?
Well, you, yeah, I mean, you could, what you would end up doing, you'd be forcing those houses. To come out the same on a real line Gapview.
Right.
You, you could remove thirty, forty feet of pavement. But you, you could remove thirty, forty feet of pavement. Starting at the age of two oh nine, going. West, I guess. And that could be landscaped. It, it doesn't have to be a fence at all. Once it's landscaped.
Yeah.
They can't get out.
And we can, I mean, a cul-de-sac at the end.
I don't think you need a cul-de-sac.
Okay, he's saying stop the road.
Yeah, no, no, I get that. No, I get that. I just meant, do we need to round it off? But if we don't, that's.
People should, people shouldn't be going there once the roads realigned.
Right. I mean, my general feedback is this is a really good use of that property and probably the only. Reasonably contemplated use in with the zoning.
I've seen several proposals of this property through the years and this is the only one that attempts to make a lot of sense.
Well, and I've heard people looking to exploring it and saying it was prohibitively expensive to build this road that is being closed, so. Uh, I'm curious where you're gonna put in that retail building to make all that money to pay for all this, but that's not my. Uh.
That's not my part of the deal either, but we appreciate this, an important, an important part of the factor of the, of the, uh, creation. And, and maybe it will be, uh, a grand assist.
Well, PENDOT's not gonna let you construct the building without, uh, doing the road improvements, right?
No, no.
So, so regardless, we can get the improvement on the road.
Right. Come on, and I, my, I mean, there's, this is a bunch of waivers and again, I'm all for waiving these parking stuff. I'm, I'm known as like anti-parking.
Yeah, we gotta figure that out first.
Um. I do like sidewalks though, when you're asking for some waivers against sidewalks and I'm also. Don't like waiving sidewalks, just so you know.
I understand.
I'm only one of three, but I'm just telling you how I feel about sidewalks. I like them. Um.
So, let me, let me just say, you know, so one of the critical things for us is we'll have to figure out how important that is. It's not just the cost of the sidewalk, it's a typical project, but does that earth disturbance and does that? It wasn't, you know, wasn't planned on the previous approval and it wasn't in the NPDS permit. So, I mean.
There are people walking down Buttermilk Falls Road every single day.
Yeah.
And they're risking their lives every time and it's, it's, it's crazy. So they're gonna walk down to there and then they're gonna, you know.
Well, and that, we appreciate that comment now because we need to evaluate. If we add that sidewalk in and it changes the drainage and we go to the, the conservation.
And they say no.
Is that the, is that the straw that breaks the camel back? So we really do want all your input now. That, those kind of comments, because now's the time. We need to make the decision, you know, are these things we can work out or is it just? You know, is it too challenging to take?
Do you need to only be a single, uh, single floor? Why, why take out the second floor?
Well, we didn't have enough parking, so we eliminated half the, it was actually parking underneath. So by eliminating that, we eliminated, there was parking, it was backing out, you know, so one of the, the previous, there was parking all along here, which was backing out, so. We, you know, knowing that people were gonna be cutting through here, we felt we had to eliminate that. And we've done what we can to meet. The current standards, but they're that different that on the previous plan, it had the same size footprint building and basically twice as much parking. To accommodate, you know, the bigger use. Uh, we realized that that was not, not an asset we wanted to come in with. So we eliminated this.
We wouldn't, or maybe more economical?
And we've kind of shifted things around. We can't shift anything that was stormwater. So that's where we've come up with kind of the minimum scope of development that can support improvements. And meet, you know, and, and we can fine tune these. Are you able to get some, some of these waivers and if we. Shift things one way, it may make something else, so it's.
Let's say I, I wave a wand and we change the parking standards. That's, it's really the stormwater. Stuff and then NPDS that won't allow you to add the second floor because of.
No, I mean.
Because if we change the standards, I mean. Doesn't it make it more economical to have a second floor?
I just don't know how we're gonna fit the parking in without changing the stormwater. So, you know, you can see. Uh, and there was some parking proposed under the building, we're, we're not gonna want to add the parking in here backing out into that main driveway. So I just, you know, appreciate the offer, but I just don't think that. Uh, there's any way we're gonna squeeze in the parking we need to support the, I mean, and I think, you know, if we had. Twice as much parking as we thought we needed, but I don't think that's the case. I think I'm expecting the parking amount is pretty reasonable for this amount. So we'll.
How many home spaces in there?
I think we have sixty-seven, about.
So many parking spots already.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying like I would love to have less.
So, well, and that's, if that's something that we think there's too many parking spaces required, we can, we can go to zoning for that too and, uh, you know. Uh, I think our initial thought was, is I need most of that parking.
Okay. Um, I just wanna, I guess. I mean, we're just seeing a sketch. We don't know anything. I haven't fully read the engineer report. You're just trying to get some initial feedback. You've gotten some feedback from the engineer.
Correct.
Um. I, I, I want to understand, I, I think I need to understand a little bit more about. Um. Just how this affects the stream and, um, the setbacks are supposed to be how much?
So the current setback is about fifty feet, which is the, uh, regulatory floodlight. And that, and the NPDS was permitted, you know, initially that's what was permitted. So this whole site, this, you know, twice the amount of script was all permitted. Uh, two thousand eight, it was. Um, there's a, you know, we're maintaining this tree buffer, which is critical for that stream. I mean, of all the buffers, that inner buffer, that tree cover of the stream channel. Uh, collecting the water and treating it before you put it back. I think we have all the elements. We have infiltration. We have stormwater quality where it goes through. So I think of all the elements, we have them. But, you know, in fairness, if this were a current NPDS permit, there would be a hundred and fifty-foot setback required from this whole stream. And that would take it, you know, right out, you know, this whole bypass street would be, would be in that buffer area. And there's just not any.
That's a buffer from the building or buffer from any?
Hundred and fifty feet from the top of stream bank of this, of this little stream that runs right.
To building or to?
To anything. For the service, basically. Yeah, even, you know, even stormwater management facilities, not. You can do conveyance, but that's about it, not basins or.
This is, this stream feeds into what, into?
This comes right down across under a culvert right here and feeds into the.
Buttermilk Falls.
Yeah.
And that goes down to what? Eventually empties into the broad?
It goes down, I think, right behind the, uh, the minasay.
Right, goes all the way down Gapview Drive, the whole way.
Right.
Right, gotcha.
A little bridge over here.
That gets pretty full, although further down, I don't know how full it gets up here.
Well, and, and you can see by the total, we've got, you know, the bank here is, there's probably six or eight feet that drop down from our site down to that street, so. Flooding is not a, you know, a concern about the flooding issue. What that channel can hold. So I think, you know. We're meeting the, uh, I think a good design on the stormwater, uh, but it does not meet the current.
Best you can do.
Right, and, and where this road needs to go, I mean, it, it just, that's the only, you have to connect here. And you have to get out of Gapview, so it's, it's kind of, not much we can do about that.
Well, on you first.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
Um, what if you're traveling south on Gapview and you want to continue on Gapview? Uh, across seven bridges, how is that done?
Uh, in this, I mean, I don't know what the township will do with this intersection, whether that will be changed or not. Uh, as proposed, you would have another option to come here, out to the light, get onto Seven Bridges Road and then.
Which way, which way would you head on? Make a right?
Make a right out of that property and then.
You can make a right, a left, or go straight at this.
Okay, so you make a right and you want to continue on Gapview, what, how, how does that work?
Same way it does now.
Yeah.
So there's cars waiting in the middle of the road.
Or you could choose to take Buttermilk Falls to go where you're getting it.
I'd argue it's danger, more dangerous the other way, I think. When, when they're stopping, coming east to turn left. And then there's cars coming up Gapview and then cars go around it and boom, T-bone that car right there. I mean, I.
Well, if we close that, then we're not.
But if you close it, that, you're safe. This project cannot. Address the south side Gapview Drive, because it can't. But it would hopefully address the north side. Of.
Right, so in other words, Gapview Drive intersection is perhaps half improved. I'm saying if I want to go down to Gapview.
You shouldn't ever do that. Should never cross.
Yeah, so.
You would turn into this property, wait at your light, you take a right, then you come, and then you take a left.
Yeah, park in that parking lot, so.
So there's still a traffic problem on Seven Bridges Road where traffic is.
You close both sides.
Two oh nine south.
You definitely can't.
How do you, how, how do you justify that?
Oh, couldn't you make that? It's, that's how bad it is now.
You're asking me? I, I believe. A car making a left-hand turn. Across one lane of traffic on two oh nine is a safer situation than a car crying to traverse. Both lanes, but cars coming from two directions.
And now remember Brett too, if you're coming, you go right, you go up to stop to go left where Pocono Fear is. If we're able to rip up the first twenty feet of road, there's no. Road there anymore.
Right.
So then it's actually a lot safer to go around that car to the right, because you're not hitting another car that's coming out.
Right, this is a discussion to PENDOT.
Right? Well, they, that, 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 this road doesn't, not, isn't gonna change. This is just adding new roads.
I would say to you of that intersection is a PENDOT conversation.
It sounds like this, uh, part has already been approved by PENDOT, is that correct?
Well, this, this was both approvals. Uh, now we're going back through the process. We started with a scoping meeting. But it's a new application, so over the current standards, it's ten years later, fifteen years later, so, uh, we have to go back through the process.
So you're not really addressing the, the, the danger of Gapview Drive intersection on for southbound traffic on Seven Bridges?
That's correct. I mean, that's.
And, and how, in total, how many variances do you want?
Uh, variances, we, you know, we're talking maybe three in terms of variances.
They're all parking.
The others are waivers of salvo. Most of them are related to stormwater, you know, the slope of the basin, the width of the top of the basin. Um. Emergency spillways, uh, some things like that. It met the criteria in the early two thousands and. Uh, some of those criteria have been increased, not to the point where, you know, we can show that the engineering. That a steeper slope in the basin is. You know, is safe from a, a geotechnical standpoint.
So you're living in the past with the regulations you want to develop to, right?
We are on the, on the.
Or this has been changed and improved since, since what your quote means.
And we're meeting many of those requirements. We've cut the, that's why we've cut the building in half than in area to meet many of those requirements. I mean, it really is gonna come down to a question whether you, you know, you want this improvement, we want this project, we're, we just don't have the option to meet all those requirements. That's really correct.
And the primary one right out here is the stream, you want, you want to be able to. You want to be able to look the ground closer.
Correct. We, the stream is located just about the property line and, you know, we basically need to have preserved about fifty feet. Uh, and then, you know, that's where this bypass roadway is located.
So a year-round stream?
I, I think it, I think it flows pretty much year-round, yeah.
Well, you said you're maintaining a tree buffer.
Right, so one of the critical things, I mean, the most critical is the inner fifty feet, the trees over that, you know, that shade the stream. Um, you know, we're not on the same level as the stream. Um, we're collecting stormwater, treating it before it goes back to the stream. So, I mean, many of the, you know, the important elements of stream buffer and water quality happen that to this, uh, you know, to the.
Importance.
Permit, what's that?
Importance of, so, subjective.
It is, it is.
That we, we improved the, the water right, the water passage laws for at least.
I understand.
And, um, you want those. Actuated. Um, there's also landscaping variation or, uh, variance.
There is some relief requested in landscaping, mostly in the dimension, again, it's a neat property. You, you know, this whole side is not being developed buttered. So maybe this is something that you can consider in, uh, a landscape strip being a little smaller on this side. Um, you know, that's what we're asking the township to consider.
What is the maybe? What's the maybe consider you asking?
Yeah.
You said maybe consider, what?
We're not, I'm saying we're not developing, I'm not clear your question. We're not developing this side of the stream by the, by the Buttermilk Falls.
And you're, you just said, maybe consider doing something?
He's saying basically if there's, because there's gonna be a greater piece of this property that could potentially be. Deeded on, you cannot develop it and in exchange for a lack, a less landscaping here. Um, maybe am I taking words out of your mouth?
No, that's exactly what you're saying. I mean, it's, you know, and that, this is a unique problem. And, and the ordinance does provide for flexibility for unique properties. Um, and, you know, we're trying to accomplish something which I think clearly gives some public good.
The main, by the way, Brett, the main things that are being requested are, so waivers are sort of a lesser, I don't know if I can say that. Waivers can be granted, um, fairly easily with, as opposed to a variance. Which must meet a very strict criteria for the zoning hearing board to say, yes, you can, you can go forward. Most of the, the. Variances, I'm saying, right? Uh, most of the variances are, they're all parking, allow parking spaces.
Allow parking to be separate from existing, allow parking, it's all parking.
Another, another factor which I guess brought up, which came up at the scoping meeting with PENDOT. Is doing a lane, a right-in, right-out lane on the, uh, on the side where this project would be so that. Uh, it would make the intersection even safer because it's being, it'd be wider and if you were coming to the light and you wanted to turn up. Uh, Gapview to the right, you'd have a turn lane, just like you do on the other side of the street to get into Buttermilk.
And you said they're considering? And that is considering?
This does not PENDOT.
Right. PENDOT is the, is mostly the signal and the intersection itself. The rest of the roads that are counter, for the most, those are within our purview.
To Robert's point, you would like to vary the, whatever.
Waiver.
A waiver on the sidewalk.
Vary on the sidewalk.
Vary on the sidewalk.
Oh, waiver, I'm sorry.
Waiver on the sidewalk.
So waiver on the sidewalk, so, um. You know, they, there's, there's no connection through and I understand, you know, the idea that it, you, you know, eventually it gets extended. Um, if that's something the township feels strongly, we'd like to know that because that may be a stormwater. That may generate a stormwater or earth disturbance that we can't accommodate. So, you know, we appreciate, we'd like to hear, like to hear everybody's comments now.
Not without at least changing something.
All this time and money into it and then gets to the point where, we just get to a point where if we change that, it changes our NPDS permit and we. Let's, let's talk about this now.
Walk to the post office. Pedestrian safety is an issue for us.
We use that button, that walk button.
Yes, yeah. All right, I have Christine next and then I will go, Marguerite and then Joanne.
Thank you. A bunch of questions here. Um. Biggest one, how protections will we have against this becoming another gateway, roadway, biasco? How do we know that all of this new road building will actually? Pass to completion?
Luckily, they're not doing anything on two oh nine really, except the light that's already there.
Right, but the, the other part of it, well, it needs to be known.
So I think I can answer that and that the township requires a, a bond, a required guarantee for required improvements. And PENDOT will require one for the, for the work and depend on it.
And if that, that sounds great, but it's, that, that isn't panning out with the gateway.
Well, in, in one day, the question is about time, right?
So, so.
Eventually, there, I mean, we, yeah, there's.
Having said that, how much time, how do we protect ourselves against? Another time suck like Gateway?
I would say this, this product is unique from Gateway. Gateway has its own, uh, unique features. Uh, but most of it has to do with the length of this, the, the frontage on two oh nine and this just doesn't have that. I mean. The biggest thing is they don't need some sort of help to, to actually construct the road itself, which the township and, I'm gonna. Praise myself on that unless it's years from now, but the, uh. Multimodal funds and different things like that to make sure that it's built and then, uh, that deals directly with, with PENDOT and, uh. The Commonwealth Finance Committee, because there's two different, uh, multimodal grants. I mean, I think in, in this case, it's much clearer that it won't be. That type of time sink and it's mostly because of those road improvements, because they won't be able to construct the building itself without that road at all. So, that's, that's the distinction. There's no interior roads, like there's just that.
So I think we could, you know, we could start building construction, but again, the bond is there and I think, you know, we've, to have a successful business here, you need to have this operation.
Oh, more or less, you have to have it all set before.
That, that's the practice.
Can't get into the property.
Right, that's what we're.
So we're not, you know, it's in our interest to get this done and operational as well as the bond, it's not something we can put off because without that, you're not going to have any business, so.
Right. Um, okay, so, um, do you know how many units you're expecting to build?
I don't really know the split up, the, just the thirteen thousand square feet in general, we're trying to get through this to see if we're, we're going to that level, so.
So that could affect the parking issues, I mean, you can have five units or you can have fifteen units, depending on what they do.
Right, the parking.
Or less traffic.
Parking is generally based on the overall square footage.
Right.
Um, and there are different uses in the ordinance, a restaurant takes more parking than a retail.
Exactly, which is.
You know, so that, we have to meet that requirement, and, you know, as you rent spaces out, if you have a, you know, that's something you have to be cognizant of who your tenants are.
Sure.
And, uh, you know, there's.
I mean, it sounds like this is going to be really more built to suit rather than just building ten empty, you know, units that are plugged in by.
Yeah, I know.
Or at least it sounds like, based on what you're saying now, that if there's the interest for the restaurant over the retail use, then that'll change.
Any, any thoughts on that, I mean, I think that's, we haven't really got, we're, we're trying to get past this and then we can start to focus if we do on, more on the building. Right now, it's just a, you know, a shell of budget. Yes?
Uh, will the homeowners that live behind there, will they be incurring any cost to tie their property into this new workaround?
Their property is already connected to Gap, their, their property is already connected on Gap View, so there's, there's nothing being given to them, it's just more like we're going to close off Gap View from two oh nine.
So they'll just have to turn earlier?
If that, I mean, this proposal doesn't have that, that was literally just, doesn't have that cutting off of Gap View Drive, that'd have to be a decision that's separate from.
Okay, got it.
That's not part of this, right?
It may be when it comes to Pendon approval, though, right? Because much like Marshall's fault, they don't want two driveways that are going to be that close to each other, yeah.
And that has not come out of the initial scoping meeting, that was not part of the previous, uh, you know, starting my through, but you know, and that's partially township input, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'd like to find out that what, Act, what is it, Act five thirty-seven, it is stormwater management? What number is it, that was just passed, what is it?
I don't know, the, the stormwater management, one sixty-seven?
Yeah.
Right, that was, that was just adopted recently, this is asking for waivers for that? Who to not have to comply with those standards?
Some of those standards.
Some of those standards, that's right.
Which one was?
So the stormwater is all act is basically.
Oh, the stormwater act, okay, yeah, 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 okay, right, I'm sorry, I, I thought you meant water.
In that same vein, um, the new wetlands ordinance that was just passed, this will be asking for waivers for those standards as well, at least for some of the standards as well?
Yeah, we don't, we have the stream adjacent to the property, but not, no wetlands on, on this side.
Right.
The wetlands are on the other side.
Yeah, so no wet, no wetland, that was my question.
Okay, and then Robert, can I ask you specifically, were you in attendance at the Pendon scoping meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Have you considered maybe doing a smaller footprint and doing a two-story, like two seven thousand feet stories?
I think, you know, with retail, that, that makes it challenging, uh, second story is far less marketable and, you know, we need to have enough, uh, building and rental space to make the project work, so.
So were the two stories originally going to be all retail or were they going to be retail and?
I, I believe they were retail, I think that's how.
In control office and in office.
That's the last.
That's the last, okay.
Yeah, about that.
Um, and then, I guess, I'd say I'd, I'd like to make one more comment, and that is, Luton County is chock full of strip hauls that have been crammed into places where they really don't work well, and my concern is that on this already crappy stretch of two oh nine, that we're going to have something else shoehorned in and, you know, made to fit, so that, that concerns me greatly.
Well, realize that, that, the, the plan for two oh nine with Pendon, not, I don't know how many years out it is, but it's going to be four lanes all the way at least to where the roundabout is, it's up here, that's why this is built with two lanes in either direction. Uh, you know, we don't know how long, but.
Then this, then that will directly affect this development, yeah.
Yeah, apparently planned.
There's no hard date on that, I mean, that's just, that was in one of their, their studies, that's essentially why they made Gateway do that, so it was the start to that, but there's, there's no hard date on that.
Yeah.
Alright, this is a lot of. Go to, yeah, I'm going to go to Marguerite, sorry.
Yeah, um, I have a question. You said this was started, um, twenty fifteen?
I think the original, it started back in the early two thousands.
Okay, so that was prior, now Gateway's here on the two oh nine. Shouldn't they have to redo a traffic study since the traffic coming onto two oh nine going has increased?
We, well, that's, that's part of the scoping meeting with Pendon, to determine what that scope is.
Yes.
They need to do that to get Pendon, they're not Pendon people. Yeah. Scoping meeting, they had an initial conversation.
Right. Scoping meeting happens at the same time the sketch plan is, it's their informal review process. And then if I forget, the next step is called.
So that will be part of it, so that's actually what the scoping meeting does, it raises some questions, determines the scope of what has to be included in the application, we do expect that, uh, track studies will be required in the current.
Joanne, you and I.
Yeah, I was just, I think it's a great idea, there's better no falls, I just going to save half of the mess with the other intersection, but right across the waterfall falls, isn't that whole big thing like rock, the thing that have to like glass?
That's near the side of the river.
In, in the hearing? There, there was a bank in there, yes, there is, there is some excavation in there.
Yeah, and then to the right of that is where the creek goes down there.
That's correct.
Yeah, but that is.
The creek is right here, here's the corridor, if it was under, and then that's who's that, there isn't, there is excavation that used to have, okay?
Blasting?
If this gets built, it will destroy one of the best places the township could election, lawn signs.
Good, instant time.
Okay, well, one more to go.
And the fact that the thing is connected to blasting, I don't know, I mean, because there's a big rock. I think it's a great idea, the road going across through there.
If there's blasting, there'd be different things like bonding required and stuff like that at that time, but we'll deal with that once we get past, uh, this. So, last thing Brett, then we're going to go to.
Oh, okay, this is going to be, this is going to be a, a thing.
Oh.
Oh, no, 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 not, not now, but if there is a four-lane proposal from Pendon, aren't we, why is, why aren't they looking at that?
Well, why aren't they looking?
Why aren't they projecting what the change of this, this area of?
Well, if they are, they will have to have.
At that point, Pendon's going to be doing like, you know, tapings, just like they did for the rest of the, the bypass and stuff in the same way that there was stuff like that, uh, up on two oh nine that pushed back, uh, like the last, uh, last case Dairy Queen and whatnot, it would be something like that, but I suspect that's why we haven't heard much about it, I mean, I think the last time we talked about that it's probably like a decade ago. So there's no current, like.
Why don't you approve something that's only half addresses Gap View Drive?
And, and they're not required to address it, this is just a.
No, so why would you do it?
Because they, because they, they don't own that property.
Meet the ordinance requirements, they must give approval, that's the.
That's a whole part from that.
That's, it's not alarming, it's that long.
It's not alarming, but in, in, to give, give our whole township improvement, it's like.
But you can't ask them to invest three million dollars.
No, no, but, but when we say you, we mean us.
Right.
You can, you can ask Nate to do whatever, but we can't make Nate do whatever.
No, but, but you can have a plan for the, the, or how to develop it, it's going to include a four-lane road.
We do have a plan, but we, we can't control the state highway.
Probably.
I understand that.
And the other challenge, I mean, there's this idea, there's, nobody wants to hear the taxes raised again, there was, we heard a lot about that.
Yeah, and see it lowered.
But you can't just be like, okay, we're going to take a bunch of money and completely rebuild this area, and also it's two oh nine.
Right.
So generally, when you see a lot of improvements, you put those on the developer to do. That's how a lot of development works, is they're required to, I mean, we're not building a sidewalk, we're saying you have to build a sidewalk.
I know, right, and you're going to waive that.
Well, I, I, I already said, I don't, I don't really want to waive it, I mean, you can look at whether it means the.
That's what we're here, we're going to take a look at that. If we can do it in a nine parking spaces, maybe we get it, but.
If we can, you know, that's, that's what we're here, get everybody's comments.
I'm going to stick with a Gap View Drive intersection, then soon. It's a half, half effort.
But they can't do the rest.
I understand.
I think it's more like a, I think it's more of a three-quarter effort here, you know, you can't fix everything, but we're.
I'm talking to you saying this is a great idea. And it hasn't been thought through.
Well, this is the sketch plan, but we're going to, we're going to.
Alright, well, thank you everyone for your comments, we, we have some hard decisions to make to how we're going to proceed, we appreciate everyone's comment.
Bye. Thank you for your time, I. Alright, access consideration on ordinance number two fifty-two and noise ordinance update that has, um.
BB, DM levels?
Uh, DB. Add that to the record in the hearing.
Sure.
Sure, um, we actually just received the, uh, proof of publication. Um, excuse me, the affidavit of publication yesterday, it was duly advertised on the sixteenth of September.
Excellent. Perfect. So, I would comment on the ordinance. Marguerite.
Yeah, I have a question. Will the noise ordinance pertain to the amphitheater that is, um, being proposed for the, uh, River Edge Bike Park? For the concerts?
Oh, it'll apply to, to any use that doesn't have a special exception, a special, uh, event permit, but that's not, I, I'm not aware of any formal proposal, I mean, they're just talking about.
Oh, no, that was stated.
It, yes, but that doesn't make it final, that this, this board has to approve that before it's filed, even that, it's, it's intention, not necessarily a plan. So at that time, yes, it would, anything is really subject to it, except for this.
The main changes here to spread one, yeah, is we're basically trying to add bass, right? Bass wasn't effectively.
Correct.
Decibels. You hear bass more.
It's wider than that, but it, it essentially goes taking a wider spectrum of sound.
Effectively, we finally got the equipment to do noise ordinances and realized that to really do it properly, we needed another table that was in the original one, we took it out because we were confused by it, now we're putting it back, and we're making it, um, NCO. Right, clear.
For the, um, bird life and everything that's going to go on in that park? I mean, it, it, uh, is that going to be subject to it?
Sure.
Like, will it be?
It's subject to it now.
Yeah.
This is just increasing, this is increasing the ability to better enforce the noise ordinance by making.
B, A, A and B, this is C, the wider.
I mean, um, I'm saying that, I'm not a technical expert, Robert is more, has looked into this more, but
Yeah.
we're out of his table to make it more strict, that's.
It'll be more strict for that area?
For the entire township.
It'll be more strict for that, that level of noise, right now, there's no, uh, mandate on C level, decibels, so.
There are two sound tables, A-weighted, C-weighted, and the difference between them is this, the, uh, the width of the frequencies that it examined, so this gives us a little more flexibility, certain sounds would be better C-weighted, some A-weighted, just to get a reading that says, okay, this is what it really sounds like to people who might be complaining from their neighborhood that it's too loud.
Yeah, and that's people.
Is that what?
That you're saying people, and I'm saying wildlife in the park.
Well.
The township is not going to enfor, enforce a noise ordinance against birds that are near, that are sitting there, we can't tell the eagles to shut up.
No, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the, by the amphitheater and stuff that's in question for the bike park area, does it fall under the noise ordinance?
Yes.
It all does.
That, everything does, except for the stated exceptions in the ordinance. Which so far did with things like snowmaking, home repair, lawn mowing, you know.
I just had a question, and so we have a DB theme, that's the leader.
Oh, yeah, and the, the reader already got it, yeah. It's, it's just like a third option. Anyone else?
Okay, what was the question? Go ahead.
I've been wondering, are, are we going to have any land left that's not built on, it seems like.
This is a conditional use hearing on this, on the noise ordinance, that's what we're asking questions about, the noise ordinance.
Okay.
We're going, well, we can open it up to comments at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Matt, can we get your name, please? Oh, it's Catherine, K A T H R Y N, last name is Valentine? Thank you, thank you.
Alright, seeing no other public comment on the ordinance, I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on it.
Motion closed.
Okay, motion by Mr. Loveenheim, I'll second, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, alright, so let the record reflect. Those at seven oh nine PM, do I hear a mo, do I doubt ordinance number two fifty-two?
Motion to do a doubt.
Mister Loveenheim, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mister Albert, further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is a consideration request planning commission reviews of draft ordinance number two fifty-four, the addition of special exception criteria to the ordinance, this is beefing up that section of the ordinance, which essentially copies over uh, the specific objective criteria from the conditional use, uh, category and, uh, adds the special exception category, which those are here, heard by the zoning hearing board, so.
Motion to send it to the planning commissions for review.
Motion by Mister Albert, second Mister Loveenheim, questions?
I, I would ask one thing, Mister Chair, then in number two, I think it's just a typo, it says uh, at the very beginning, additional special exception use requirements and preventing an application for conditional use approval, so, yeah, I think that's supposed to say special use.
Special exception.
Definitely make that.
Other than that, that's the only comment I have right now.
Awesome, thank you, Christine?
Yeah, um, I'm guessing that, I didn't have the chance to check the website today, but I'm guessing that the.
Been here.
Someone coughed, we couldn't hear what you said. That's okay, so I didn't, I wasn't able to check the website before I came here, so I'm asking if that draft ordinance is online? Yes, okay.
Uh, it's under resources, open township projects.
Yeah.
And then it's, uh, calling special exception criteria.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to, and then, so this is the first I'm seeing anything about this, uh, meeting, so does it, does that have to be discussed here first before it gets sent to the planning commission for review?
This is that discussion, but this came up, uh, over the last several months and dealing with conditional uses, we noticed in the adjacent section, we needed to beef that up.
This was missing.
So, and then has, has that been discussed at the public meetings, though? I don't remember that coming up.
The solicitor, Ron, mentioned if it was necessary, so Julia and myself drafted this over the last couple of months, I think it was started in May, when that came up.
Right.
So.
What I'm saying is, this, this is the first that I'm hearing.
So ministerial that, you know, this is the discussion on that. We know that we need this piece of the ordinance.
We all received a copy of it, we just, I received a copy of it with my packet.
Right.
I don't just get here, I get it before, so I'm able to read it.
But just discussing the need for it, like, that, I wasn't aware that that happened.
It's required. I mean, there, there's no, there's no discretion about it, it's like, this just spells out the criteria for how those hearings work and what criteria.
This was missing in our ordinances, it was supposed to be there.
Uh, so it's, it's required to do?
Yes.
Right? Okay, but then, okay, so.
Just so you're.
Just so you're clear, Ms. Carol, there, there is, the board is simply reviewing this draft, and now they will be sending it to the planning commission for review, and the Monroe County Planning Commission for review, so not any action being taken on it, they're just saying, okay, if you look at this, looks good, let's send it to the commissions and get it in, in the, in the hopper.
Right, and hopefully in a couple of, six to eight weeks, vote on it.
So, if it's an ordinance, you'll have to have a public hearing on it.
Just like we just did, yeah.
For the other.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye. Okay, next is, uh, what I hope is a, a brief discussion, we know that data centers are a, uh, permitted use of economic development zone, and, um, just like we noticed that we could add some material for special exceptions, I kind of thought it might be prudent to apply some of what I call the big box standards, because those are the warehouses, logistics centers, but some of those standards that we added in our curative amendment to logistics centers and, uh, warehouses, I think we could potentially add some of the same, just basic requirements on making sure that there's the traffic studies that are done as necessary, that are already in the ordinance for those uses, and just apply it to data centers perhaps. I think we stratified it where it was over fifty thousand feet with those other commercial uses, we know these don't generate the same level of traffic, but I thought it might be nice to consider that landscaping, the other.
Is that not in the ordinances right now?
Not, uh, the data centers that's in the ordinance right now, it, uh, all of the general economic development zone standards applied with, but nothing specific to that, and I think.
Additional or?
I'm talking about additional standard.
Additional, extra standards that one would have to put into place.
Right, because right now, the, the data center, you know, the data centers, when.
The loud, no, rep mentioned that, they're, they're loud, so we'd wanna make sure if.
There's sufficient screening, that there's noise mitigation built in, you know, those, those sorts of things. My thought was, we applied this to larger uses of the warehousing kind before, and I think it makes a natural sense to apply it to data centers, which are, you know, somewhat, if not almost entirely similar, aside from physical traffic, but I wanted to get your thoughts on that, I think we added all these requirements to anything that was above fifty thousand square feet in the floor area.
Uh, I think it's a good idea, I, I just wonder if it's a little premature, because we just don't even know if this is a use that's, um, of the, uh.
I think it, I think it will be, because it's already.
I mean, the pathers has mentioned this in the open forum.
So.
That he's looking at possibility of data centers, so.
Yeah, but, uh, he's also in the midst of a study, which, um, is so far done, the, o- only the, uh, let's say, the bare bones of what's necessary, whether it's here, which we don't even know about that yet, there's gotta be a lot of study after that, and one of the big questions is, is there enough electricity, they, uh, well, those power companies say yes, but it hasn't been studied, and whether there's enough broadband.
Right, but, but there's, there's still a permitted use already, so what I'm saying is, we need to have those types of conversations, like the same way that we have the will serve letter, you know, as a requirement for the sewer and water authorities, I think that they should be required to get like a.
I just, it's a little premature now to get into this, can you address that by switching it to be a conditional use?
I, I would, I, I think that we're unique in that they're permitted use, I think that when you're talking, you know, one use, when it's one building, one parcel, they typically want to do larger uses than very large parcels, the ordinance, or when the ordinance was adopted, data centers were basically nothing more than like, uh, a place that had a bunch of servers and was like fifty, sixty thousand square feet, maybe a hundred thousand, now the proposals are for several hundred thousand square feet buildings.
Right, so that wasn't reducing the intention?
Right, right, so. No, I don't think, right, right, but I, I think what we do do is we choose which ones are the used for the use of the job, maybe fifty thousand, you know, over that, yeah, yeah. And, 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 we can't have the, 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 when you just, over there, I, I think, oh, I think, we should, we should, that, 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 rather, rather, just have, have, not, nothing, this is not, not a state, we, we can't have that, I think.
Well, Christine, we should, we'll, we'll, at, at data centers, we know, we know where that, 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 that. Someone's on the, she said, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
Right, right, so.
Brett, so, so, uh, Scott. We, uh, I think, I think we're, 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 and seeing there's what, what, actually, we put, put, places, or, or, this is, is to protect our community, to make sure that if, if they are all built, that they're done properly, and then, when I say, yeah, I know, we do, do know that, that everything must be allowed, so, so. To make sure it's in the right place, too.
Have on the ambulance at that time. This power structure will allow that lifting capacity to increase to seven hundred pounds. Um, so that we are looking at this from a uh safety perspective. Both uh for the employees who are attempting to lift people who are heavier than that two hundred and seventy five ish. Pound weight limit, once you take the structure out of it. Um, as well as safety for the patient who is obviously already under distress for some reason because they're being loaded onto a stretcher. Um, but the power stretcher will make this whole process safer for all people involved.
Well, I heard you say this doesn't commit the township to, or actually specifically commits us not to invest anything, correct?
Right, this EC will be responsible for the match. Um, this is going through the township because the township is uh having to, we have to be the applicant. Um, the only real cost of this is my time uh because you've volunteered me as a grant writer for our emergency services.
Gotcha. Any question?
Grant's already done, isn't it?
Yeah, why is Jacob, why are you not voting on this?
Oh, I, so I can't because I'm working for Rep Madden, I I make direct recommendations to her on LSA allocations.
Okay.
Um, so because my office plays a hand in literally saying yes or no to these. Um, I don't want to double dip and do it from the township.
All right, just was questioning that because it sounded like a grant and I thought, well.
That's a grant that we're basically applying to.
Right.
Right, if if it did not affect Smithfield in any way. Um, I would be able to, but since, even though it serves well more than Smithfield. Because they have about two thirds of us.
Question.
Okay, so does that mean that on the other end in Madden's office that you would future talk there as well?
Correct.
Okay.
So I have uh other staffers that review applications that I can't touch.
Right.
Basically, the way it works is the caucuses get allocated a certain amount that they can allocate. Or recommend to the Commonwealth Financing Authority. For our real CFA that we talk about, and they're the ones that vote on the final allocation usually in May.
Thank you.
So the chairman has recused himself, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
All right, I. Okay, I know my intention, but it passes. Okay, next to the consideration is like proposal for engineering services regarding Marsha Falls house demolition. Um, CNN quoted us ten thousand and Barry Isaac quoted us twenty five. Uh, twenty five thousand three hundred dollars. So there's obviously a big difference there. Uh, and this doesn't include the uh.
This is the only question, right, right?
This is just a service to do to me. Correct, well, well, not that, but but. That's actually. Right, so the only noted difference, they see that their Barry Isaac also mentions the basement obser- uh abatement observation. Is that even necessary? Is part of uh this, or they're just trying to be a little more inclusive perhaps?
I I I don't know what they're referring to.
Pre-demolition asbestos containing materials.
Yeah, well, I guess they were gonna grab, go in and possibly grab some samples if they saw anything, send it away.
But would would T N M observe the demolition itself?
Not.
Or would that be part of the other, the grant for the actual demolition?
I I would, I would write in the specifications that a contractor has to dispose of asbestos in a proper way.
Right. Oh, to me, there's a a clear winner, but if.
I'm just trying, I mean, uh just in fairness.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's lit, it's lit variously.
Very, I said.
I said?
Yeah.
You know, it has broken the things out, so I'm trying to exclude. Um. To get to an actual number, if that's not included, then so the asbestos is included, so that cuts out thirty one hundred.
Yeah.
The Monroe County Conservation District permitting, that's not included.
I've included.
You have included, so that's five thousand dollars. The bid fate services is seventy two fifty. Construction administration?
I don't have any construction administration.
Okay, and abatement observation. So really, it is a difference of. If you cut out environmental services, construction admin and abatement, you're looking at now twelve twenty five, it's still more.
Yeah.
Uh, when I spoke to Alex this afternoon and he hadn't had the opportunity to go through everything. Um, he did contact Barry Isaac and asked him if somebody could join us on the meeting. Uh, I don't see any Isaac faces here and I don't know if anyone is online from Barry Isaac. If you are, we'd love to hear from you. Um, okay, we're moving on on that. Um, one of the things that Alex wanted to look at was to go through and and find. How comparable these are to one another, um, because the proposals were written in different ways, so we weren't sure.
Yeah.
So if you're actually okay with this, um, we're going to eventually need to ask for an extension from the Monroe County Redevelopment Authority. And a grant's supposed to be completed in December. Um, but if you're okay, we'll table this, sit on it, ask a few a few more questions. Uh, from Barry Isaac and get a little bit more clarification from John.
John, do you think you'd be able to get it written in substantially similar form?
Yeah, I could, if you could get a copy, if you want to read back those numbers, I don't care, but I could, or whatever, however you want to handle it.
And maybe reach out to Isaac and clarify what we don't need, because there's a lot of stuff in there that's sent if you don't need.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Just nice to have comparable, they're they're pretty different.
Yeah.
Descriptions, but.
John, we will get you a re-doctored version then.
What fun.
Uh, I motioned to table this.
Motion by Mr. Albert, right here, second, second, Mr. Levinheim, any question?
I I have a question.
Uh.
Do you want me to quote everything that Barry has quoted?
No, no, I think we're gonna make sure that they gave us, that I I feel like they probably gave more than they needed to. So I think.
Based on what I heard, I think they did, or at least more than what I was asked to give.
Yes, correct, because. Right.
That's.
Yeah, because there were no uh, no alternates A and B, so. We'll clarify that then. Hi, all in favor, table man? Hi.
Hi, sorry.
Oh, all good. Uh, next is the consideration of continuous Smithfield Township's affiliation of Broadhead Watershed Association. They've been substantially helpful in quoting programming in the parks, but also. In securing uh funding for like the kiosks to administer a park and whatnot. And our municipal membership actually ends this month and we historically, from our charitable. Uh, budget line item had contributed a thousand dollars. But we recently switched to a more restricted manner of contributions. I think we should note that in the letter, although they did get a copy of our original policy. I'm just wondering if maybe we could continue to work with them on a similar basis, but. Maybe spell out a little bit more that, you know, we want attendance at like. At what events and whatnot.
We're gonna, you're, are you advocating giving them another thousand dollars this year or not?
Well, I I would be in favor of that. I think that the work that they've done in reviewing our ordinances and whatnot, feedback on.
I mean, I think our resolution though is clear that it can't be an unrestricted.
Correct.
Contribution, so if they want, if there's, you say it's a membership?
Oh, they call it that, they they don't, there's no actual form for like a membership, but.
Yeah, I have, I haven't seen it, so I don't know. Um, this is the first time I'm hearing of this, but I would suggest. Looking at what the membership gives you and if the township feels like that is useful. To have, to be a member, whatever they call it, or affiliation of Broadhead Watershed Association. Then that gets put on the table because that is not an unrestricted.
Correct.
Um, or alternatively, we could um arrange to pay them for some of the services that they render for us. That's, would we charity?
I mean, I'm not saying it's charity, but I I think we get more than our thousand worth on their ordinance feedback. And the help with parks especially. So I think that if we would formalize that, I would be in favor. You know, giving a contribution, yeah.
Well, we can't give a contribution because we have a resolution that says we can't do that. But we can pay for services or we can pay for a membership that gives us access.
Well, that's that's what I'm saying. So I think restricting the contribution and saying, you know. In order to get this thousand dollars, you continue to do it. I talked to.
Right, so it'd be like.
Yeah, I talked to the president of their board who, you know, said it was no problem. I explained that we really wanted to be much more formal. Because we don't want to go a year and do it and then get nothing for it.
Correct.
But I think that, you know, I would like them to have representation at at public events that we're holding and. I think like the Trump retreat, for example, is something that we're inviting other groups to to be part of, that are affiliated with us. And things.
Can we see a a formal? Um, proposal or some sort of, you know, what that membership include?
Yeah.
Okay, well then I'll motion to table this.
Maybe they should propose whatever it be.
Well, I guess I'm not motioning to table, I'm motioning to request. Do more research.
I mean, it's not.
To table any decision on this.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I would like to do it at our next meeting. I don't think it should take. Too much uh effort to to secure that and I think. Uh, most of the last, it predates you starting, but I think they did a pretty good job. I mean, how much was that to you yet for in administering?
It was all science, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was very good.
And.
Yeah, I think it was about ten thousand and then we worked with.
So obviously, it's it's worth it to have a partnership with them.
Yes.
Formalize it.
Okay, cool. All right, so. You already hear motion to table until the next meeting?
Motion table.
All right, question by Mr. Levinheim.
Sorry.
Second, Mr. Albert, question? All in favor, all right, hi. Then we'll proceed to public comment. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Art Crowe. Two weeks ago, I asked you about uh Shawnee Valley P D R. You said you guys didn't know anything about it, you were responsible for it or anything else. My suggestion is you get more responsive for it. But tonight, what I'm here to ask you about is property taxes. Uh, in twenty twenty two, they went up sixteen dollars, mine. In twenty twenty three, they went forty seven dollars. Last year, they went up twenty twenty four, two hundred and one dollars. And this month, I get a bill from uh uh Blue Ridge Cable. It says I have to pay a Smithfield Township franchise fee of nine dollars and seventy six a month. That's another hundred and twenty, a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty dollars. How are we doing all this money?
Sir, for for what it's worth, on the Blue Ridge issue, they neglected to collect. The fee last year. That is on them. We are working. Uh, in a legal manner to resolve that, but that has been in place for decades in the township. So that's not exactly something new. They're fixing their error in replacing that notice on the bill. So that goes with the general fund and generally speaking, I'm happy to provide you a a a letter that explains what we did with with taxes. I mean, we had to fund some pretty critical improvements and that's not. An increase that's expected to ever happen in that that nature again. But um our budget meetings are next month or at some point.
I would certainly hope not because it's a lot of money you're all paying. You all wake up to it, start thinking about it. Thank you.
Thanks. There.
I got you done my question. I think I sent something to Robert and asked him to share with everybody, something that was online.
Yes.
No, we know that.
Does that go against the injunction?
I mean, if they host host it.
Oh, they're going to.
They more or less have to do it. We can't preemptively say that they're going to.
Okay, so how do we go about this? Because they will do it.
Well, as soon as it happens, we'll.
Deanie, picture.
We'll take that.
Recall.
Absolutely.
I have, I don't know if I can get pictures. I'm pretty sure they're not gonna do it, Rich, I'm lying probably. But what, I mean, what procedures do the new neighbors take?
I mean, forward all of the above to the township and uh especially Ron and then we'll have to take care of that through the legal system.
Let's go, let's go back to taxes for a second. Most of the taxes we all pay are the school taxes. That's the big bill that comes. And this year, uh, the Pennsylvania Legislature, uh. Would say passed or rescinded where our, we're gonna call it, what was called Hold Harmless. Which was a a rule that said that if a school district, correct me if I'm wrong, it was Jacob, lost students. They didn't lose any money, but if they gained students, they didn't gain uh the equivalent of what. Uh, it was costing to educate those students.
State money.
So Monroe County, uh, or let's say East Stroudsburg, Stroudsburg and Pocano School Districts. Uh, got uh awarded, was it eight million, six million, I can't remember, a huge amount of money. That they never had before for this year and then they'll get that every year going forward. Um, they're supposed to have a meeting in December and decide what they're doing with that money. Well, part of it probably has to go to pay expenses that they haven't been able to pay. But I think uh anybody here should think of attending that school board meeting in December and saying. There's money that should come back to the voters.
To to be clear, part of that money was specifically allocated for hold harmless relief. That is the funding that that you're speaking about. The other increases are not relevant to that, but. I know that the school districts are talking about refunds.
Right. But what here is unless we go and talk about it with them, uh, it'll just disappear.
Okay, let me say something to you. Let me say something to you. My school taxes in twenty twenty, my, I'm talking about my fall taxes. Uh, went up and in twenty twenty one, they went up and twenty twenty two, they came down. And they came down in twenty twenty three, but yours went up.
Yes, so the the state tax equalization board gave more of the burden on the school taxes to Pike County. The portion of the school district that's in Pike County and lessen the burden in Monroe County. That affects theirs, but our improvements were all related to roads and capital. Uh, purchases that the township hadn't been able to make for two decades. Far, remember, that's, I I'm gonna give a fair explanation.
That also did include the passing of the fire and of the E M S tax. Um, after discussions with the E M S, they were very, very close to not being okay. And the board made the hard decision that we needed to make sure that our emergency services were available to help our residents. Uh, Debbie, you're in the room, you can speak directly to how bad it strikes you then, if we did not approve those emergency payments. We'll pass that task.
That is correct. Um, and as in, in return. We no longer do a subscription drive, Bushkill does not. We consider all residents of Smithfield Township as having a subscription. So you receive uh the benefit if you need to use the service. I can only speak for Bushkill, I know suburban head proportion and they will do a subscription drive. And I can't speak for Marshall Street, whatever they might do. But uh, the the fact that uh if we build. Say a thousand dollars for a Medicare uh service for someone who's on Medicare. Our reimbursement is three hundred dollars. So this is one of the only services that you come, you use it, we can build. But we're not gonna get paid more than they want to pay us. So it's it's not like the grocery store that raises the price of your bread or your milk if it costs them more. We can raise it all we want, we're only gonna get what we get. So we appreciate this sort of everyone. Previously, we would send out eighteen thousand subscriptions. And we thank the two hundred and twenty seven households in Hopeville.
Yeah.
So now every household contributes in some way. So if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Awesome.
And I can tell you of my fifteen years, I'm so happy.
Thanks, David. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um, if you guys are doing our leaves in the borough this year?
I'll be sending a letter to the borough manager by the end of the week.
So that's a yes?
Uh, it's.
What's the que- I don't understand.
So.
They pay for the leaf selection.
They, the Delaware Water Gap Borough has requested a proposal from us to pay for their reflection. Um, so Chris and I have been together, we look at it, how much it costs, we send it off to the borough. They take a look at it, go yes or no, we don't want this service, we do, come back to us and we will approve it and sign off on it and add that to our route.
And and how much is that?
Uh, I'm still finalizing the numbers, so I don't have an answer for you right now. Um, they'll have it by the end of day on Friday though, so I'll know shortly.
Okay, I I have three piles ready, so it's four in a year.
Yeah.
They're falling early.
We'll have, yeah, we'll have those dates up soon too, as we finalize that. There you go.
I, first of all, I want to apologize about earlier when I.
There's no need to apologize.
I, well, I get excited about it and I'm like, oh, I want to say something, so I apologize. Anyways, is now the time to ask my question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Are we gonna leave any unbuilt land anywhere or are we just gonna? Have every, like, every square inch have a building on it?
Our ordinances are very stringent and I think that people are used to. The thought that it's only roughly seven percent built out. The ordinances allow it to go much higher in with the, in the courts, like the county's comprehensive plan. But people either have to leave a substantial amount of open space on their development or pay for the preservation of open space elsewhere.
Who who makes the ordinance?
The board supervisors does.
So that would be you folks, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, thank you.
No, of course, and um, I don't know if we. That doesn't have our open space on it on that map, but. Well, yeah, we're happy to send you that, but we're also, our E A C is working on things with that map, which is environmentally sensitive areas. So there's a lot of planning going into that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And if you want to give us your email or something a- after the recording is done, we can send you a map of the open space and all that. We're working on a page on our website for that too.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I also think. Given what I've seen being here for a while, the three of us are much more committed to open space that has existed. With the whole group of people before. There was a period here of sort of a, just a. Happenstance development wherever we wanted it, and I think it was around between two thousand one and two thousand eight, somewhere in there. And um, we've been trying to figure out a way to say, Smithfield Township should be a place where it's green. Where there's all kinds of open space and where there's development, it should be concentrated in certain areas where it doesn't. Um, intrude upon open space. And the way it used to be was, you went in and built a tract of single family houses of twenty five hundred square feet.
Right.
Hoping that we don't have that anymore. And uh, we're working to to preserve open space. Uh, increase parkland, anything we can do to say, um, concentrate the development, but leave the rest of it.
I I will say part of it too is we're working on updating parking standards because I think that. Most new development requires way too much parking, not even necessarily for, you know, the.
Good point.
Yeah, for, not even necessarily for just the use that it has, I mean, you don't necessarily need, you know, I. I think in in some commercial uses, it's like one spot per employee per shift. But there's never going to be, you know, in a place where there's three shifts, there's never going to be need for, you know. Five hundred parking spots at like Bygon or something like that, you know? At a time, there might be fifty, sixty people in a place, so that's one of the other things that hopefully in the next few months, once we're past. Ordinances two fifty three and two fifty four, we will be on.
Tear down paradise, put up a parking lot, we're gonna have that there.
Hey, big paradise. I want to thank you guys. I I really appreciate that you're doing the best you can have, the best in mind for the township. And as a long-term resident, I've seen the other, you know, the regimes.
Sure.
And I still get comments from landlords, you want something, you want a zoning variance, bring the guy a gallon of whiskey and you get possible. Um, but nonetheless, and I also heard you say comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Yes, that's a beautiful thing. Um, and I'm, you know, so I'm I'm here trying to do damage control. The longer, the the, the the longer view. Um, and so there's a little bit of defensiveness and and I know. Uh, we all feel very strong about where we live. Um. And I, and we can't help but think that the comprehensive plan has got, we had a lot of really valuable input from the residents. In developing that plan.
Yeah.
And I'm I'm told this is a mute, is a moot conference.
No, he's talking about the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan, just so you know.
Well, spot.
And and also, to be clear, uh, don't take my word for it yet because we're still researching, but we're looking into funding for it. They're just expensive, so it's going to take us time and it's going to be longer.
Yeah, and there's, there's, with the comprehensive plan, um, there could be. A a a urban development commission, so that when you guys are brought. Um, ideas for development, you have a, I know you all have, but it's not really, it's not, it's not cohesive across the board. You have an idea of what you'd like, but there's, unless you're, unless you're working with a comprehensive plan in mind. Or an urban development commission that could guide us through proper development, making the E D. As as efficient and as beautiful and as as tax generating as possible. And leaving the open space. Um, so it's, it's. Anyway, I just want to say thank you very much for your efforts, Andrew, and it's a hard job and, but there's a lot. I mean, I feel like we're backing into, like this thing today with the development getty drug is a piece, is a, is ad hoc, it's a piecemeal thing. And this doesn't conform with a, with a larger concept and we're, we're, we're shifted back, we're giving variance for this. And sidewalks are always, are very frantically blown off, there's no walking paths, there's no biking trails.
Well, I think that's why you're seeing us be so much harder on a lot of those things though. I mean, especially when it comes to road construction. You know, people want to build these old antiquated, you know, cartways that can't be modernized without a ton of money. So we'd rather see people do it right the first time rather than us have to go back. I mean, so we're working toward a lot of those goals.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one brief comment about the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan is that it's a good plan, but it's really general. And so, you know, and it'll say very in many, many places, okay, this is what we want, but the township is responsible for this.
Sure.
And so, so the township's comprehensive plan really goes more regular than that, so.
Yeah.
Approach?
Don't have to ask.
I'll just stand on here. Uh. Speaking of piecemeal, uh, some weeks ago. Uh, we were approached at the planning commission, as you don't remember. Uh, we were approached at the planning commission with a proposition that, or a proposal, that a four acre parcel. Uh, near the airport or adjacent to the airport down the valley be rezoned. It was zone R as were adjacent properties on that side of Airport Road. All was R one at the time. And we were asked if we would consider rezoning this four acre parcel. Just opposite the runway, I think you guys know where it is. To M one to comply, the reasoning was to comply with the rest of the airport. On the other side of Airport Road, which was at the time and still is M one. Manufacturing. So now, the question is, I I voted against it. But it passed at the, at planning commission, I don't like any of you guys. I want to know, this is, this is spot zoning, is it not? Or is this what you would call spot zoning?
Doug, the the parcel on the other side of this is already M one.
Yeah, I know, on the other side of the road.
No.
No.
Adjacent to it is M one?
It was, I mean, my understanding.
Yeah, okay.
You've got, it was, it looked somewhat like this, is the road. That was all M one and that was R, along with your right, all of that was all R.
It was adjacent to R.
It was adjacent on one side to R or on two sides to R and two sides to M.
And I understand. And I understand that, that some people from the development behind this parcel came to object or complain or.
It came after it was already done.
Because one of the things that was, uh, made a condition upon our approval at planning commission, was that the, uh, the adjacent neighbors be consulted before you, the board supervisors acted.
So we, my understanding is we confirmed that there were postings, and again, my understanding.
I'm sorry, there were postings?
But as pro, by law, there was posting. And advertising, uh, just telling you what I.
On the, on the site?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
But, and my, where, what I also realized, what I under, we've understood afterwards, is that there are certain places they could not post, or Ken did not post, because he would have to walk on somebody else's property, and so he was, he did not do that. But I do understand that, my understanding is that it was still done to legal requirements. I, I think I agree with you that I would have, I would have liked to see it posted more. And these are things that I didn't know until after the fact, but that's how it was done.
When he puts posts up, they're like these little things that if you drive by, you can't even see.
Did you happen to see a posting on that piece of property?
I didn't go that way, but there were postings.
I've looked, and I've never, since, since that, that, uh, uh, planning mission meeting, where we insisted that the neighbors be consulted, of course, the neighbors, all, every neighbor I've talked to says they were never consulted. So what you're saying is that posting is sufficient?
Well, there's advertising too.
Advertising where?
That's the advertising, I think in the Pocono Record.
In the Pocono Record, it was advertised as a zoning change?
You don't, you don't have to have the physical paper to, to see these, they are available online for free by the way.
No, no, I know, I know, I'm close there too.
A letter to the abutting properties?
No.
On a zoning change.
Not for a zoning change.
When it's a land development plan or.
Right.
Um.
So if, if there's already land development that has to go on that property, those people get a letter directly. Yeah, there's no land development that has been proposed for that land.
Yeah, I understand that.
Doug?
Yeah.
That was in the Pocono Record on June twelfth of twenty twenty four.
That's just the law, the law says you have to do that.
Well, it, it, it's on.
It's the record, yeah, you have, you have to still.
You, you do not, you do not have to buy it, the physical paper or a subscription to see it, they've, are on the legal advertising, which are free to access.
That, that, that law may eventually change, because I know it's on P S S.
Yes.
To, to advise that they, that changes.
But notwithstanding, we did put on our website with our open projects, had to do everything.
What law?
The advertised.
The state law around advertising different things, it's governed by the state.
Alright, so look, hey, it's done. Um, and, uh, now it comes down to what the neighbors think on whatever project is proposed. So if I'm correct, I would assume that one of the projects that would be proposed could be, for example, oh, I don't know, a concrete plant?
No.
Or perhaps a, uh, garbage transfer station?
Right, some things allow, M one's allowed, but we also know that that property is almost entirely undevelopable.
Correct.
Cause it's.
Because it's wetland.
Correct, so there's a natural buffer that's midway through the parcel.
Just cause you change the zoning, doesn't mean you can, you can do things for M one, but it doesn't give you more rights as it relates to wetland.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, so.
There, there.
There's information that I'm getting from you tonight, that we did not get at the planning.
Well, and this is a good point, Doug, cause it was brought up at the EAC, I, I think we just need to think, Julia, about a better feedback mechanism to at least the PC and the EAC, cause the EAC specifically asked about, we made these recommendations, we don't know what they said, and, you know, in some ways, it's like, well, i- if you look at the minutes of the supervisor's meeting, you can, but they sort of wanna direct feedback, maybe we can figure out a way to do that.
I will a hundred percent say that is one of the reasons Alex's position exists, and he goes to both those meetings and does relay in fact what happens.
Yeah, well, well, maybe.
Maybe I have.
Uh, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Doug, I, I agree, there needs to be better feedback both ways.
On a verdict form, we talked about this when you were still on the planning commission.
We did?
Yes, I said, do you want us to take each recommendation or condition and write something, you know, about why, I mean, we did talk about this.
Yeah, that would be a good idea, I think.
Talk about.
Every recommendation you make, there's a specific feedback that goes back.
Either a feedback or.
Sure, we appreciate that from time to time.
I think that'd be good. For both PC and the EAC, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you, picking up enough of your time.
No, it's all good. Also, at this point, maybe we could all be part of a, a email database, so you can notify, you do an email blast and/or specific email to the.
We have to be really careful, because we can't have, we can't have any deliberation over email.
I'm sorry.
We can't have any deliberation over email. Any deliberation, if it's not legal, related to a legal issue, or related to an HR issue, or related to procurement, the deliberation happens here.
Sunshine laws, they have to be public, they can't have conversations in back channels.
Right.
Right, I mean, as far as notifying, technology's really changed, nobody reads the Pocono Record.
Right, but, but, again, like I just said, you don't need to read the Pocono Record, they, it prints in the physical Pocono Record, but there is a page that is dedicated to the.
The township website is, is, it's, the township website is pretty amazing, especially when you look compared to other townships in terms of the amount of information.
Christina, I thought I saw you had.
I did, but I wouldn't.
You did, okay.
You're sure? Yes.
Hold on, I'm gonna go to Marguerite first, she had a hand.
Okay, um, I just have a question, I'm still wondering, is there any word on our growth, the price is landing?
I don't have it updated this time, unless there's something else, but.
I'm still researching at this time, or?
We'll let you know as soon as we can.
It's still being researched?
Yes. Jane.
Um, just about the posting, the zoning change, the postings. Any town I've ever lived in, if there was a zoning change, the sign was like a two-foot by three-foot sign, I mean, you couldn't miss it. And, and I can see why, if somebody just put it eight and a half by eleven, oh, she wouldn't, you wouldn't see it if you were driving. So that, it really surprised me to hear that there was such a small sign, and I've actually printed some, some ordinances, some signed, some zoning signage ordinances out that I'll be happy to share with you.
Happy to read.
I'm just saying that, you might wanna save your head, and some, I mean, because it was like this big.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I gotta, I gotta be honest, I, I, I didn't know, I mean, I'm relatively new, although, uh, uh, soon I won't be able to use that as an excuse anymore. Um, I assumed that for zoning change, there was a letter that went out, cause for a lot of things, there is letters that go out to neighbors. I mean, is there a, not to put another hand behind my, I strap myself down, but it probably makes sense to.
If I could actually step in with this one, um, Ron and I talked about this at length after the concerns were brought up from the last one. The MPC requires that only the property owners affected by the zone change have to be notified.
I understand.
So we did do correct when we did the zoning change, but Ron said, hey, it would probably be a good idea to notify everybody adjacent of it moving forward.
I agree, I think we should make that change.
You've already adopted, um.
And we took, we gotta change that to be covered in.
We should change it as a, now, it might be a, a policy that you're doing, but we should, if, if you leave or they're in supervisor, so we should make it, do we have to make it a resolution, or is it an ordinance change to sell them?
That is.
If you wanna formalize it permanently, it's gotta be in the ordinance, but what I was gonna say is, if we're gonna do these types of things, we have to make sure that that's gonna be covered in the escrow agreement, because we're not gonna pay, I mean, I, look, as soon as it's gonna be a dollar to mail, just a letter, you know, especially what we're doing first class.
Uh, like, I, and Ron and I also spoke about that, um, with, because we're doing these things voluntarily, we don't have to send them certified, so it's not eight dollars and
Right.
fifty cents or something like that.
Right.
Um.
No, but still, it, it's gonna cost some money, and if we ever do larger signs.
Well, can, can we do it, can we do it, uh, can I even talk about this? This is all public comment, we can't make any decisions.
You can, you can talk, you can talk about it. You're not, you're not expending any funds.
I know, okay, fine, sunshine law, by the way, um. Well, can we just please draft that change? Just to say, I know it doesn't address the past, but.
Just the management.
It just requires.
Ordinances.
Does everyone know what I'm saying here? Requires that the township write a letter to adjacent in addition to directly affected.
That's funny.
In the case of.
And how are we gonna define?
What's the difference between, there are, but how do you differentiate between affected?
So you can make the zoning change for it, you can make a joint, cause the peo- people's properties that we're talking about, their zoning did not change.
Right.
The adjacent properties zoning change.
Right, so if, if we decided to rezone, let's pick Smithfield Gateway for fun. If we decided to rezone that from U D to R two or R one, that, I'm making a, a joke. If, if we did that, for whatever reason, only the owners of those properties would be notified, not anyone that lives next to it, so not Scottamore, not even y'all down the way theoretically based on where the parcel is, so that's the change that we're talking about making.
It sounds to me like it must have been marked there, because isn't it, what is it, birch acres or something that goes against that property, so they wouldn't have seen if you posted on Airport Road, because
Correct.
Their property, so I don't even know.
And that was actually the problem for the situation, because they had wanted posting up against abutting their property, and Ken is not legally allowed to trudge up through.
So what we're just saying, it's instead of.
It never got posted, I once, excuse me, excuse me, I'll stand up. And, and I.
She's not on the planning.
Respect, I'm not on planning, but Doug is. Once we knew that, that they had that meeting, and I know that what Doug voted against, others voted with, saying, uh, it should be, uh, presented to the homeowners. Um, and that L T S development, which butts right up to that section, uh, we went by that property twi- at least twice a day, because we always have to, we have to, so. On my word, on my word, and I look for little signs, because I've seen those signs that was never posted.
I've got the proof of, uh, posting from the zoning officer in my office.
I can hear you.
I have Ken's proof of posting in my office in the file, um, I would be happy to show that to you.
What we're saying.
That's, that's Ken's word against mine, that's fine. It's not, it's not totally, yes.
Well, I think the point, though, is that we probably all agree that maybe posting is not enough.
They must have.
But she doesn't care.
We were pretty diligent about looking at.
I was just saying, what we're talking about right now is that we agree that posting is probably not enough. So what we're suggesting is that in the case of zoning changes, that the adjacent properties, which would include these people,
Right.
um, re- receive an actual correspondence by mail.
And we just have to define what, as Ron said, what adjacent.
Yeah, outside of abutting their property, you have to abut that property.
But what's a little bit sad is everybody that lives there, or even in our neighborhood, we don't, we don't, and that, that L T S development, which they expected to be broken through to Airport Road, you know, with more, a few more houses may, maybe. It's too late, you know, I, I remember that expression when I first got active, like, of this expression coming to meetings, it's too late, too late.
The L T S development is not approved yet. But I, I mean, they continuously ask for us to get tabled, so the board has not approved the L T S development. Are you referencing Three Point Garden?
I can't really hear you very well.
They're talking about Airport Road, not.
Okay, I, I'm sorry for necessity.
Yeah, not, it's not the birch acre side, it's the side that we're talking about. It's on, it's on Airport Road, which butts, butts up to the end of that development. And some of the.
Which is birch acre.
Some of the people came here.
Right.
You know, to say they were not notified, they, they, you know, okay. We just stay in here, wonder what happened.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
And it's too late.
We entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Evanheim, all second, all in favor.